What's the difference?
I think the only difference is this one you can't have it indoors.
Pretty much.
I'm gonna call this workshop to order. Thank you all for coming out. Today's the 21st of July, and for this workshop we have to have an approval of the agenda. And on the agenda we have two items. We have the election of planning board officers for the coming year, and then we have ordinance revision for discussion for an addition to the proposed land use ordinance, section 8.40, equestrian centers and riding stables.
Well, we have discussion of the provision, but I'm actually gonna do the provision, right?
Yes.
Right?
That's true.
Okay. I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah. We can have planner's information on there, or as we always have?
No, we're just...
Yeah, no. It's the workshop over here, the planning stuff next.
Any things that the planner wants to talk to us about planner and business? That's like...
You wanna add that to the agenda?
That's what I'm trying to...
Oh, there you go. Okay.
I'll second that.
So a motion has been made and seconded to add planner's business to the agenda?
I'll second that.
No, it's already been seconded.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unanimous?
It's unanimous. Now back to the original motion.
I'll second that, too.
It's already been seconded.
It's already been seconded. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Okay. Election of officers. We can either do that now or move it to the end.
End. Make a motion, move it to the end.
Well, we just approved the agenda as written. No changes we made.
That's true. You're right.
I'd like to make a motion that Rich Canone stay on as chairman of the Land of Planning Board.
Wow. Thank you for your overwhelming support.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to stay on as the chair of the planning board. Any discussion?
Yeah. Nominate John Russell.
Well, they have to do his first.
No. If you have a selection, multiple, no. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
No, you'd actually have to defeat the first motion in order to put a second motion in there. Because the motion has been made and seconded.
I thought we're doing Democratic convention type stuff.
No, but you could do multiple candidates. So you can be, you can be one... What was the motion actually to nominate, right? Not to elect.
I said, I'll make Rich Canone chairman of the planning board.
So that's to elect. Okay.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. We need a vice chairman.
John?
Nominate Jamie.
Yeah, I'll accept the nomination for vice.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Can we have some discussion?
Yes, we can.
Doesn't the vice chairman have to attend to site blocks?
Yes, he does.
Okay, I'm out.
I'm not trying to be snarky yet.
No, I just...
You're right. It's part of the...
I don't know that the vice has to attend, but if he does, then...
But I'm gonna have to share a document with him. Looks like you've got one of them.
No, not really.
As long as you have a court.
My personal opinion is that if you're on the planning board, you should go to site one. It's part of the, it's part of the difference.
Let's make a...
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded for John McKinderin to be the vice chair. All those in favor? All those opposed? John is defeated.
I'd like to nominate Tom McGinn as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded for Tom to be the vice chair. Any discussion?
Yes. I think a vice chair should be at least attending half the meetings. Because the rest of us don't...
Is, is Tom not here for half the meeting?
A vast majority are here.
Well, actually, since I do the...
Yeah. How did, how did that work out for you?
Everybody attends half the meetings.
Okay.
Okay. I think Tom was down, and you were down. Marty had her.
No, not quite. I've been trying to do...
Well, you missed one. You missed one.
Yeah.
And I just, I just missed one. I'm pretty close to perfect.
Yeah, I missed the only one.
Yeah, you actually were close to perfect, John.
That's what's excuse.
Yeah.
I should give you, I should give you the attendance sheets from now on.
Yeah. That's what, you know, we knew you weren't gonna do it.
Just to...
That doesn't count.
There's been a motion to make Tom the vice chair. All those in favor?
Did, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Did, did I second that?
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. He's not here to accept, so I'm...
The attendance is a concern.
You can withdraw.
I thought I was on where?
You can withdraw a second if you want. Motion has been made and seconded for Tom McGinn. All those in favor? All those opposed? I'd say unanimous of opposition.
Hey, if this is any interest, then it's...
I'm going to short circuit it and jump straight to the secretary, and I'm gonna nominate Chip to be the secretary. Well, I...
Secretary.
If you see my, saw my handwriting here, look, this is why I can't do this.
Yeah, but you just have to read the notes and...
I can't read my own thing.
I don't wanna ask the time today and things, so if I can read your notes, you can be the secretary.
Okay.
So give me, so I'll nominate Chip. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded for Chip. Any discussion? All those in favor of Chip as the secretary? Unanimous. And I think we'll just put the vice chair's position aside until the next, until next week. And we can see Tom, Jamie.
I don't wanna. I have too much on my plate. I'm telling you that right now.
You, Tom, and Jamie. If that's okay with everybody else.
Yeah.
So we'll table the vice chair the next week.
July 28.
Okay. Ordinance revisions. Did you guys all get, oh, thank you for sitting through that matter. These are the, we had some discussion and some interest in being able to do equestrian centers, but there was nothing in the ordinance. So we thought, well, we should probably make people legal if they wanna do it. Because we currently work on a theory that if you're not allowed, then you're automatically disallowed.
No, it's not mentioned.
If it's not mentioned, you know it's not allowed. So we figured, since there's enough interest to do this, we should get something in the ordinance. So we, now, we have this ordinance to look at and a public hearing, and we need all the inputs you guys can give us. Because a lot of this was crafted from other states and other ordinances. And I've talked with a couple of farriers in town, and they've given me an idea of what we're doing. But none of us have, we haven't, because I don't have horses.
Or not in the field.
I'll start. I'm Milda Kastner, and I have a private riding facility on Rundle Road. And I appreciate you all taking the time to come to us, because we are animal, people, horse people. My read of this is that it was taken from Montana or somewhere, you know. It was taken from a place that isn't around.
Away.
And so what I would like to suggest, and I can go through some of my concerns and questions in detail, but what I'd like to suggest first is that we have some sort of little working committee or subcommittee to work with TAD to go through this and refine some of the definitions and refine some of the provisions in here that I think are extremely overbroad for the type of operations that we have in Arundel. Because they all sound the same.
For the most part, they are. There are certain variances, but for the most part, yes.
But, you know, this, this applies to the person that has the two ponies in the backyard. It applies to the person who's, you know, got their retired racehorse out in, in, in back of their house. And to require some of these very financially burdensome provisions is, is just overkill, in my opinion. And, you know, I appreciate the fact we all want safe operations. We want safe facilities. We want to have the least disturbance to neighbors, et cetera. But given that this is a rural community, and also I have a personal thought that many of the, the nice properties that are left in Arundel, like the Swecker Farm and 70 Acres up here, would be great facilities. I'd love to encourage more horse people in this community that bring us jobs, paying, bringing farriers, you know, all the things we heard about when we were closing down the racetracks. It's, it doesn't put any demands on, you know, schools and services and all that kind of stuff. It's a really good industry, if you wanna call it that, for this community. And preserving rural character's always been high on the list for the comp plan, et cetera. So, but, you know, I can go down through, I, I feel that, from my point of view, the smaller uses that are private, this is really overkill on that.
This was not meant to aim at those smaller private uses. This was, this was more centered around a business model.
And so we can instruct you and help you understand how these things work. Like, some people will lease a barn, and this says you can't have a barn within 100 feet unless it's within your own facility, your own house. And so some of this just doesn't fit the way we operate. And again, I can go through the specifics if you want, but maybe you wanna hear from other people first.
So this is just for commercial stables?
That was our intent originally, was to make this a commercial aspect of it. Because for...
That's what I, I got that impression.
You, you own a house and you wanna have a horse. If you've got enough room for the horse, okay.
But this says 10 or less for the purposes of personal use. So that covers the backyard pony. I mean, so that's, I'm just saying refining some of this to...
And you're right, and it's, it's a valid point.
And, and, you know...
But it also, that also reversed the boarding, you know, training for those being boarded. So that was the intent there. You know, once you start boarding, then...
You have two stalls and you board your neighbor's pony? I mean, that's not really...
Well, but that was...
That's what the ordinance says right now. Although you can't do any boarding or training or anything like that with the current, if I could.
I would just like to help you understand.
No, no. Right now, the ordinance does not allow that. The ordinance hasn't allowed that.
Period? Like even for a commercial stable?
Yeah. Well, no, for a commer, in the residential districts, you can only have 5,000 pounds of animal weight.
Who did I talk to on the phone when I called? Just, okay. Perfect. That, when you said that, I'm like, I must talk to her. Can you tell me where the commercial area of Arundel is?
Yeah, Route 1.
Route 1, Route 1 or Route 111.
So technically, all of our stables are...
Technically, yeah.
Technically, all of our stables are operating illegally in residential areas.
That's exactly why we're...
That's why we're doing this.
Yeah.
We're saying, okay, we need to, this is, this is not realistic. This doesn't work. Obviously, it's not, it's not in character with the community. It's not in character with the, with the, with historical uses here. This happened somewhere in between 2005 and 2007 when this came in. John, you remember when this came in? It was about 2005, or was it '07? Somewhere in there?
I don't remember the year.
No. Somebody's, somebody's up the thought. My first question is, do we actually have definitions?
Uh, do we have definitions of stables? We don't have definitions.
I'm saying...
We don't have that, stables.
No, no. What I'm going at, my question is along the way.
Yeah.
We were told point blank, when I've asked questions before about definitions. If we don't have a definition, it's not allowed in town.
Right.
Point blank.
Commercial stable doesn't have a definition. We don't have a definition. We don't recognize the ordinance.
Does equestrian have a definition in town?
Bay Park?
Equestrian. Does it have a definition in town?
No.
That's why I'm saying, that's what I'm getting at, is the word. Do we have a definition? We have to start with a definition first. Because if we don't have a definition, it's not allowed.
But it's the use. It's the use. Definition of the use.
No, the definition goes with the use.
Definition of the use.
Section 2.2 is what...
What we're trying to do today is hear from the horse people, not discuss with ourselves. And I would like very much to hear input, and I think Mel's suggestion was great. If you guys are interested enough to form a committee and to, you know, bring some of this to the board as to what makes sense in Arundel, that to me would be great.
I think that's an ideal solution. I don't think that this is something I can even be handled tonight, to be honest.
Oh, no, and it won't be. This is to get input, you know, what are we gonna do? How do we work this out?
I'd like to have some discussion.
Oh, I think discussion would be great.
Right. We could discuss some of the items that are in this proposed ordinance, but that's not to say that that's gonna be anything final. But just for us to, you know, agree with Chip, just for us to hear some feedback on this is very helpful.
Right. So you're going at this more as like creating a definition of sorts so that stables can operate legally in residential areas? And then you could sell, like when I spoke on the phone yesterday, if I chose to sell my stable at some point, I could sell it as a business, because it wouldn't be legally.
You're grandfathering.
Right.
But if I'm grandfather, does it still grandfather to the, the buyer? It is.
But being grandfather means you're limited in any expansion you wanna do, or any expansion of use, or any expansion of area. The intent of this is not to limit you. If you, or to provide, to allow you to expand, it's to take the non-conforming stigma off you and make you a conforming use. So that, because non-conforming moniker has financial implications for a lot of businesses. There's some banks that don't feel very comfortable about issuing loans to non-conforming uses. That's, that tends to be a sense of instability to financial institutions. So what we're doing is we're taking off that stigma of non-conformity so that, first of all, it makes it easier for you to sell your business. And if you have a business and it's conforming with these ordinances, and they want, they can expand in that district, it allows you to do that without having to worry about 20% or 15% expansion, or going to the planning board, or going to the ZBA for, for variances. It lets your business grow. That's the intent. In areas where it's appropriate. And obviously, in an R1 district where you're packed between little houses, probably not gonna be a good place. It's probably not a good fit. And that's why we have the three different classifications, and you'll notice how they're, they're in different zones. Classifications are based to, on impact to the surrounding area, especially in the residential districts. The R4 district is not a residential district, by the way. The R4 is a rural conservation district, and that's where everything's on. You know, the equestrian center, the equestrian stable, and the riding stable.
So where's that? Where's that?
Probably half the town.
Half the town.
That's a...
Where I am?
Oh, no.
Railroad tracks, railroad tracks, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is our four down there, isn't it?
No.
Well, we've been there.
She's at the opposite.
Out there in 91. Okay. So we've been there for 25 years. And it came before the board, okay. And it was free enterprise, and the board had to approve it as free enterprise, just so they knew what we were doing. And we had to answer and provide a lot of information at that time. I even had to catch how many pounds of poop a horse ooped.
Well, that's more information than I needed.
Well, I thought so, too.
No, it was part of free enterprise.
And we also had to go in front of the whole town, too, and have a public meeting about it before we were even passed. So we did all of that, and... We had to go in front of the whole town. We were the first stable. Yeah, we, I think we were the first commercial stable. And she was right behind us. And a lot of kids have passed through there and learned to ride, and it's been a great experience, I think, for Arundel and for Teresa's business, and I'm the landowner. So that, but I can appreciate that Arundel's growing, and I think we moved out of County Mountain Port seven years ago, and live in Arundel now. And it really is a special place. And I think a lot of people between Boston and Portland are finding it. And I think part of it is the ruralness with all the facilities around, okay? And I own the Captain Lord Mansion, and it's a bed and breakfast. And we have a family who comes up and rides every summer here out of Boston. Their kids have learned to ride at the facility because it is a great summer experience for them. So I think, and it only puts great life on our town. But I do appreciate also that if other people are asking, especially out there on 111, where you've got a lot of traffic and visibility and ingress and egress problems because of the speed of the road, the town really needs to address the safety issues there. And I do appreciate how some people, if there was a smaller plot of land, how many horses are you gonna put in your backyard? My horse never goes out. He has show shoes on. He never goes out in the field, okay? So to say, well, you have to have a horse with, he's a show horse. He doesn't go out in the field. And there are other horses at the barn that never leave their stall except to be ridden because you don't want them to get cut. You don't want their feet to be damaged. You don't want them throwing shoes. You don't want them doing all this stuff because they're show horses, and we show on a wide New Eng, New England circuit, okay? Other horses, though, are for fun, for kids who own their horse, and they do go out in the field. So I think getting feedback from all these different kinds of stables would be really good. And we would be willing, I'm sure, to be on a committee and help to form something.
Yeah, that would be great. Because part of what you address is what bothers me. We try to, you know, put these things together as sort of, you know, size fits all, but that, you can't do that. There are so many different things. But then, at the same time, you don't wanna make this so large and so cumbersome with every tiny little detail addressed. So you gotta come up with something that makes sense, and it makes sense for everyone. So I appreciate what you're saying, because I hadn't even thought about the show horses, but yeah, some of them just don't go out past here.
Actually, I finally got a little bit of a farrier this morning, and I asked him about the half acre, and his response was, what?
Can I ask what farrier you guys are talking to?
Dick Brown's, who we use.
Just, yeah, just carries.
I talked to, I talked to Wendell Smith.
Well, I got cows, no horses.
I'm in Goodness Mills, but whatever.
Yeah, I know him.
You know Wendell? Wendell told me an acre.
Well, no, the, the, what, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
I'm Deb Davis.
What Miss Davis said is exactly what the farrier said, is there, you know, if there's a racehorse or a show horse or whatever, it doesn't leave its paddock, except to, you know, to go out to exercise. And you don't have all the horses out in the pasture at the same time. I've been around horses a little bit. By the time you have three of them, at least one isn't gonna get along. I'm serious. So, you know, he mentioned that, you know, you might have some out in the morning and some out in the afternoon. Where I'm at, the input I got was the acreage requirement here is excessive.
And it, and it could be. I had never thought about show horses.
Yes.
Because we're talking about equestrian stables and riding, and I'm thinking, yeah, you're gonna be going out, and there's a rink, and you're gonna be riding around.
The other, I got, I have another question, which is for the board, which is, the intent here is to provide rules and regulations for somebody who's doing this. It's a business, not Suzie who's got a pony and a stallion or something.
Correct.
Okay.
We already have those regulations in place.
We already have which regulations?
For Suzie, they have horses in the back.
Okay. Well, where, where, what is the dividing line, Tad?
Uh, it's in the residential districts, 5,000 pounds of animal. And then you can't do it. And R1 and 2...
So that means you have one, two really big horses?
Yep.
Two draft horses. You're overweight. You can't go anymore.
Can't do it. But you're gonna have 5,000 chickens.
Is there any way to change the wording of that?
Uh, yeah, you could. That's, but that's for, that's for, that's for somebody who's, who's just got, got their, you know, they got a, they got a pony for Christmas. They got a pony for Christmas, and they're keeping their friends their, their, their pony there, or they're keeping their horse there. They're not boarding it, you know, in a stable.
So that doesn't apply for this?
That, no, this is, this is really commercial. This is a commercial basis.
Draft horses who might like to go and...
Maybe if he wants a team of four.
Exactly.
Not two. Maybe if he wants a team of six.
Right.
But that's the way it is right now. That's, that's the ordinance right now.
So maybe we can consider some of those things as we go through.
Again, I know how much cows weigh. How much do horses weigh?
Very depends on the kind of horse. Depends on what, what it is. But I mean, yeah, the draft horse...
Pounds is pretty average, you know.
Yeah, I was surprised that he wanted one like that.
You know, if you get into draft horses, purse shirons and that type of thing, you know, just go to the Big E and you can see, you know, 2,200 pounds, but I don't know.
Yeah, we have some of those with heritage today.
And that's, and that's not what Suzie's doing.
Yeah, it's because they... Well, a lot of people are gonna have draft horses, I think, because they're pretty mellow, and they're, like... You can just, you can put a husband on them and go down the trail.
But the bottom line is, if you have two, even about two draft horses, you're not...
That's a draft horse, you need a dress.
But remember that.
For normal horses.
Yeah.
Let's, let's get back to this thing here.
Focus on the commercial.
No, I think the line is important, John.
Yeah, well, what, what's the...
Between recreational and commercial. I think that's an important, important line, so...
But that's, that's...
The line between recreational and commercial is if you're renting, if you're, if you're being paid to board somebody's horse, that's commercial.
But if you're teaching, if, but if you're...
Even if it's Suzie in the backyard.
But if you're teaching horseback riding lessons...
Then you're getting income from it, which makes it by definition a commercial process.
Okay, right.
But if I, if I have two stalls and my neighbor has a pony, and she boards it in my personal barn, then you're saying it's commercial and it falls under this...
It's commercial if you're charging her.
Of course I'm gonna charge her. I'm not gonna pay for her hay and grain.
Well, no, 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 but she could pay for her own hay and grain, and you're not charging her for it.
But why would I do that, Marty, if, if it's my space? She's gonna pay me for the space.
No, I, I...
I can rent out a room in my house and I have this product.
Well, please, we don't wanna go there either.
Or, or what about a lot of the stables that are doing right now, which is a co-op? Which everybody comes in and does it.
Yeah.
You know, how are you gonna govern not? So, or deregulate it? Because that's a new upcoming thing. People do that all the time.
Well, you like my co-ops.
Yes.
Meaning that you own a riding stable, say like I own my riding stable, and I decide to tell all my friends, I'm not boarding anymore. I'm doing it as a co-op. So that means that everybody buys their own hay, their own grain, and takes care of their own horse on my facility.
And then they...
Right, but you get some income from it in terms of the space that you're renting.
Yeah, but it's very minimal.
But that may, under a strict definition, that makes it commercial.
Yeah.
Because you're generating income.
But if I rent out my house, my room in my house, that's not commercial.
I hope you report it.
Well, that's an income tax question. But if I rent out a room in my house, I don't have to go through that. That's my personal home. It's not a definition of an inn or a hotel or anything like that. So all I'm saying is that I think there's de minimis situations where we can define that and say, those are okay. Because that's just somebody who's not in this for making a bunch of money, and they're not having a lot of traffic in and out.
And you're absolutely correct. That's, that's part of the discussion that can be had. You could say, you know, okay. But then the question becomes, okay, so if I have a stall for my horse, and I have another stall, and I rent that stall, that's okay. But if I put two stalls in there, now, now am I looking at...
Well, that's the discussion, I think, where we're...
You're correct, and that's, that's part of the discussion to have. But the question was, at what point? And at the point at which you make income, it becomes commercial.
Yes.
In a strict definition of the word.
But here, it was like, I think on Mrs. Davis's site they have done before, where they've had students, 4H students, come in and help and work or anything else to learn so they can participate in 4H, so they can be qualified for York County representative to, to go down to the Big E, like we've had, I know the ladies from, that's why I'm speaking of it. But turn out, this is something that people don't realize that happens here in Arundel.
And we do the same thing.
And that's, that's all part of the discussion.
We all do it. So my other question is, so the Suzie...
I gotta ask you, hang on. Mark's been trying to get a question in.
I don't deal with a lot of horses, but I have farms in Arundel, and I know I'm restricted by the 5,000 pound limit, which I realize the zoning has to be changed. But when I spend this much money on taxes, and I get a couple stalls in the winter, then I'm gonna lose money. I'd like the ability to have some young woman, some young man that wants to get ahead in life and learn something about animals, and be able to board those for winter or spring or summer. To have that ability to pay for my taxes, pay for the agricultural purposes that I'm trying to do on the land, and not be stifled.
But that, that's, that's why we have this, because right now you can't.
I know. I understand that. But I'm, that's why I'm here, because you can't. If I could have it, I wouldn't be here.
He pushes the cows out sometimes, because they'll, they'll keep warmer than the horses will.
If you want farms in Arundel, you have to help us to get by, because right now it's gonna be folded over. We can't do it. So whether it's a zoning, whatever it is, something has to help us to get by to keep this rural.
Because we're really not making money. I mean, nobody makes money. You know, we're, we're not.
But I'm not getting the impression that you guys wanna stop that. You know what I mean?
No, we want, we wanna make it legal.
Right, right, right.
Because right now, if you go, Tad was talking about, you go to sell your piece of property right now, you've got a restriction from the bank on that. They may not wanna finance it because it's a legally non-conforming use. So, yeah, you can be there, but you can't, you can't expand it. You can't do anything. The bank may say, no. If we get this passed, the bank's gonna look at it and go, yeah, we don't care. You know, because you're legal in that area. And that's, that's part of the intent that we're looking at.
In the backyard barns, I mean, honestly, and I'm not, you know, like I know how hard it is to monitor everything, but there's so many ordinance in towns that don't get enforced at all. So you make these ordinances, and then Suzie's boarding her friend's pony and getting 500 bucks. Does anybody know? No. You know what I mean? So what's the, you know, in that sense, like how, how can you even keep track of that? You can't. You know what I mean? It's like an honor system at that point.
Well, usually what happens, if you want me to answer that, usually what happens is the neighbor who doesn't wanna smell it anymore turns her in, turns Suzie in. And then Suzie doesn't have a permit to, to, to board, and yeah, then, then she's gotta do it with a code enforcement officer.
But you don't really know if she's taking money or not.
But you don't really know if she's taking money or not, is what I'm saying. Are you really gonna audit her, you know, at that point? And she could say, I just have this pony here.
That's an enforcement issue I don't even wanna get into.
You know, like. So I couldn't, you know what I mean, it's.
But you, you make a very good point because there, and I've been fighting this for a long time. We've got so many rules and they don't get enforced. So whatever we come up with, it's gotta be common sense, it's gotta be enforceable.
Right.
And if it's unenforceable, then why bother with it?
That's kinda where I was going, like if it's gonna be so specific, you know, and all these, you do need lines, but if, we all know, how much is it really gonna get enforced, you know what I mean?
That's the problem with the government today, too many rules, regulations.
You can enforce them all, cause there's just too many.
So we need, we need something common sense that works a little.
Just to make it legal. Like, can it be as simple as possible, just to make it legal for everybody, you know what I mean?
Yeah, safe fencing, but require somebody to go and pay for three board fencing, five, five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who said five?
Wow, that's.
Safe fencing, absolutely.
I agree with you, I got that one sorted.
Why don't we get specific here, because we're just going around. I, I wanna make sure we don't get into mission creep here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Cause I need, I need some help. I wanna stay focused on.
Right, so if we go, if these are the items that you want and we just kind of go through them, like I think we're all in agreement that fencing is reasonable, five.
But it's not necessarily the items we want, it's a framework to start with.
So I, I've got a fundamental question about the framework. Given that we're talking about Arundel and, and not, you know, the bluegrass country of Kentucky, why do we need to have three different kinds?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Why, why don't we just have something called a commercial equestrian stable? And define what a commercial equestrian stable is.
Absolutely, I think that definitely does, because, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about all the different people I know in this town that are, you know, are they commercial or are they not commercial?
I mean, that, yeah, I think it's important to, to have, I think you can have some de minimis annual income, I'm out.
No.
No, you can't, cause that's not.
Of course, fine.
I think if, if I could answer that, Chip, I think the issue was number of, the number of horses that were being, that were being boarded or serviced. And the kind of events that were going to occur. That's what made the separation.
Important because.
Events was a big issue.
One of the things that we have to be mindful of as a planning board, and all of us as neighbors, is you've gotta be a good neighbor. So you can't, you know, pack a hundred horses into just a couple of acres and expect your neighbors to be happy with it. It just doesn't work. So that's one of the things we have.
Something that came to your board is the plan?
The only, only purpose is to, is to, is to limit the larger facilities, exclude them from R1. Or.
Yeah, one acre zoning.
DB2, well.
Yeah, the, the.
But if, if, if somebody's got a hun, I don't understand this. If somebody has a hundred acres in R1.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a hundred contiguous acres, I, I, I don't, I don't have any problem with them having ten horses on.
I have, I have a problem with it because it creates a feudal system where the more land you have, the more usage you're allowed to do things. R1 is by definition, R1 is supposed to be residential housing. So that you don't have to worry about your neighbor putting in either a large equestrian center or a large gas station, because he's got enough land that he can do what he wants on his land. Or any other large item. Now, if we talk about the DB2 or the R4 or some of the other areas, okay, fine, I, I have a problem with that. I tend to look at R1, which is a one acre residential lot, and say, you moved into that area for a specific reason and that's because you don't want businesses all over and surrounding you. And I think we need to take care of that. I disagree with the concept of.
The guy who, who, who has had a hundred acres in his family for fifty years. Why, why, why do the people that wanna buy a one acre house lot have more rights than the guy who's got a hundred acre?
Why should he have more rights than, than the ninety-nine people that have one acre pieces of land? That's, that's, that's my.
More rights?
Sure, if, if, if he's allowed to do what he wants on his land because he's got more land than somebody else, then he has more rights than you.
No, I, I totally disagree.
Okay.
What, what, the whole point of planning is to make people neighbor friendly. So if you've got a hundred acre, you can do a whole lot more without bothering your neighbors than if you have one acre.
I live right next door to that, the development.
Yeah.
And all of those development people came to that town meeting and complained about all kinds of things that they were worried about. But I assure that most of them now, if you ask them, barely hear me or barely know that I'm there or anything's going on there.
Yeah, because you do most of your stuff inside.
No.
No, I do it inside and outside.
No, no.
Horses don't make noise. I mean, they, they are a noisy, so I think maybe the distinction of.
I hear, they're dogs more than anything.
Is, is the compatibility, like agricultural uses and residencies are compatible.
Define commercial equestrian center. Don't bother me. And I, I don't care, you know, if, if somebody's got the land and the setbacks to do it, any place in town, it looks, it's simple, guys.
What about the offsite impacts, Chip?
Huh?
What about the offsite impacts?
Offsite, like what?
Traffic.
Traffic?
Traffic, events, noise.
There's no traffic. There's no traffic.
If you have an event, there's traffic.
Yep, there is.
You have an event.
That's real.
You have a dressage event, you have traffic.
Parking that night, yeah, it doesn't happen.
You also have, you also have loudspeakers, you might have sound system, right?
But I, I had. Yep, yep, I've had, I've had.
Trailers sometimes, lots of trails.
You have different types.
About the five thousand bikes.
I've had a few events, but I don't, I have ample parking enough that nobody's ever been on the road.
So can we take the events out of this? Can there be something separate for events?
That's, there is, that's the difference between an equestrian center and an equestrian stable, that's the difference, is the, is the, is the type of event that it can occur there. That's the difference.
Yeah, but if I have a pony club who come in for the, for a Saturday with instruction and four trailers come in.
Right.
I mean, that is gonna be disrupting anybody.
And you're not on the road, you're not pestering anybody.
No, it's, it's nothing and they leave when they're on and.
Versus, versus, let's say you're doing a, a dressage event, a, a regional dressage competition.
She's not making enough to do that.
Ted, Ted, Ted.
See, that's the point, that's the difference, making the separation between the different levels of use.
Right.
It's not, it's, it's the basis.
So you're talking about common everyday use, which is like one event a year, like a clinic or a whatever, compared to somebody like a facility that you're holding events weekly or monthly or.
Monthly, yeah.
Or wedding events or things like that. You definitely should put an ordinance on different things like that.
And that's, that's what we're trying to, that's why we have the distinctions is between the types of events you have and those who don't. Like you don't have events, do you? You might have an event.
I do have events, but it's, they're, they're within my.
They're small.
Yeah, they're not big, regional horse shows or things like that.
And it's entirely possible we could have facilities here that do that. And we have, I've been, I, I used to EMG a lot of, a lot of these events. That's why I've been the small ones, I've been the huge ones.
Right, right.
In places where they didn't have enough space to park.
You guys just got somebody to build a really big facility.
Yep.
And they want to do things like that with my assumption and, you know.
And right now they can't. And the objective is to make it so they can, because they're in a location that has the access, has the land.
Right.
And is in an area that's, that is designated for that kind of use. And they're not allowed to do it right now.
A lot of events, though, can be controlled by special permit. So if I'm having an event that's gonna be twenty people at it, it's moms and dads coming out to see their kids who've ridden lessons all winter long. You don't need to come and get a permit, the same cars come in. But if I wanna do a clinic where they're.
Or a one day horse show.
Or a one day horse show there, which.
Then it should be a permit.
Then I come in and say, this is how many people, we're gonna have porta potties there, we got parking for the trailers, that or that, and you say, okay, what's the hours? From nine until five, and you issue me, issue me an event permit.
But that, that would be an event permit issued by the board of selectmen.
And then if you wanted to do like a three day event or something, then you would have to definitely do the same kind of thing, that they would have to go, you know, a, ask for the permit. And you would have rules and regulations, I would assume. You would need to have enough parking.
Yeah.
What kind of, what kind of volume, how many people would you imagine at a larger event?
The, the largest event that I've been to, um, was in May and there was a thousand horses there. And that was at the, um, Tops Field Fairgrounds.
Okay.
I've never rode them.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, no.
You've never rode them?
Nothing, not.
No, I've never seen.
It's like a, I mean, if you had, you know, ten trailers, maybe that would be enormous.
Yeah. That would be huge.
You know, the.
Right, but if they wanted to hold, I'm thinking bigger than that, if, if they wanted to hold the Hollis Ring, instead of at the Hollis Ring, at the Bootetts Farm. How many horses would be there and how many stables would be there? That's where.
Right, if you were saying like in your case, four, four trailers, okay? And if you turn it up, put your, 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 how many people would come into that? Are you still under the hundred mass group, mass, that's what I'm trying to say is, so your permit is, cause you have a mass gathering permit, okay? Which is in town. You fall, yeah, but you're under, you're under the hundred, you don't need that kind of permit.
Anything under a hundred, you don't need a permit for.
Well, why don't we, I guess the question is, why do we wanna make it so people have to come in and get permits when they wanna have a.
This was something out of the audience.
I, I understand, but I, I think that would be actually burdensome, instead of making it a, making it a, a right to do things like that. I mean, that's what we're trying to do here, is make it so it would be a right.
We're trying to get to the point where we make this division between kind of big and little.
Yeah.
Or events and not events or, you know, you.
I think you would have to break down on events.
I was trying to make a distinction between.
Commercial.
You're, 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 you're not really a commercial operation. And I was trying to make a distinction between you and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're definitely.
Your operation is, is somewhat.
Definitely commercial, it's not something that's definitely.
It'd be a big, and it'd be a big distinction, even if you had four draft horses, you're not a commercial operation, you're just having all right horses.
Well, so I have an indoor riding ring, R-I-N-G, so you might wanna just correct that, it's not a ring, it's.
Yeah, I know, that was, that was spell checked, decided to change things for me.
I have an indoor riding arena, which is my private, but this says I couldn't have one. Because I'm an equestrian stable with ten or less equines with a purpose of board reading, personal use training.
Right, but we're, we're looking at eliminating the personal use.
Well, yeah, actually you can, cause you're in the R4 district and you can have an equestrian center. You can be labeled as equestrian center, cause you're in the R4 district. So you could have it and your indoor ring is good.
Yeah, but how do we know where we are? That's in the definition of an equestrian stable, if you talk. It says indoor riding arena is a private.
There shouldn't even be a limit on indoor rings.
No, I have a seven.
If I have one horse and I have the money to make an indoor ring, I should be able to do that.
Yeah, but it's whether you do it for, but if you're doing it for events, that's a different story, right? Wouldn't that be a different use? If it's for personal use and you're using it just for personal use.
Indoor ring.
Right, it's just like we have a garage for my, eighteen cars or something.
If you have a farm and horses, you should be able to have, it's a building on your property. There shouldn't be any regulation on that.
Which is all taxable.
Right.
Right, you're bringing your mind, what's a problem?
If it's your personal building, then yes.
Personal uses, yeah.
But if it's being used from a commercial point of view, then you have to look at it and say, okay, I'm using it for something other than.
Here's the, here's the instance.
I think, I think you, there, there's something important to, Rich, to, to understand is, an indoor riding ring is gonna be. The minimum usable size of it. It, you know, Mild, Mild is building is, is, is not an insignificant structure.
I'm completely aware of that.
And it has to meet all the planning board restrictions on, on that kind of, on a barn or what, I don't know exactly what the, I still haven't memorized all any of these ordinance, but.
You've had, you've had four days.
Yeah, well, I've had four weeks, but, uh, at, at, at any rate, but, but my, I guess my point is. It's, it's, it's not whether it's an indoor, there's an indoor facility, there, there are other regulations that, that will govern whether somebody can build the structure.
Right.
Lot size, I, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, okay, so what, what, what do we care whether, whether, whether Mild is in R4 or frankly, R1? If she's got enough, if she meets all of the setbacks and everything else to build an indoor riding ring, why can't she build an indoor riding ring?
Well, those setbacks, Chip.
But my point is that Mild can, because it's a personal use. She's got the space, she wants to put in a riding ring, this gentleman in the back says, I got one horse, I wanna put in a riding ring. Absolutely, go right ahead. We're not, we're not even saying that you, that, you know, we don't even look at that.
This does.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
But that was the point in here, because it said personal use and, and Mild brought that up.
But, but that should just be stricken, because I'm not gonna follow in any category other than equestrian stable, which says no indoor riding arena. I'm not an equestrian commercial where thirty or fewer are used for rentals, rodeos and blah, blah, blah. I'm not a facility with more than thirty equines. So the only thing I can follow under is equestrian stable, but that prohibits an indoor arena.
Well, okay, again, I think it needs to be written.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, of course.
No, it says both indoor and outdoor riding rings, paddles, carels, may, yeah, may be permitted.
First or last sentence, first.
The last line.
The first equestrian stable.
Yeah.
Indoor riding rings are prohibited, right here.
Yeah, equestrian stable, but you're here.
I'm not that.
Why not? Thirty or fewer? Of course you are.
No, I'm not commercial, that's in the definition, and it's not used for rentals, riding lessons, rodeos and shows. That's, doesn't fit the definition.
We should just have.
But you can.
This should maybe just start it all. Like, this should maybe be totally scrapped and start from the beginning.
Yeah, I think so too.
With a committee, you know what I mean?
My, my thought on the equestrian stable is just take the personal use out.
Start with the definition.
That means that if it's personal use, it doesn't exist.
And then go further.
It doesn't get controlled this way, personal use is allowed.
Well, wait a minute, it's not limited to personal use. It says personal use is allowed and so is breeding and so is boarding and so is training and so is.
You're missing the point. In Mild's case, personal use says that she cannot have an indoor ring. And I'm saying, take personal use out of that picture completely, we're talking about commercial aspects.
Oh, I see.
So if we eliminate personal use, it won't affect Mild at all.
Yeah, well, now wait a minute, now, once, once again, if it's not, we seem to be following the Dillon rule. So if it's not in here, that what Mild is doing is okay, then it's not okay.
Mild, Mild is already covered under the, the five thousand pound, whatever that.
I have more than five thousand pounds of horses on my thirty-five or forty acres.
And, and that, and that needs to get addressed and we may say, okay, five thousand pounds, you may end up saying three horses.
But that's why you need to rewrite that, we need to start all.
That's correct.
Cause this is so stupid, like this is just.
Can we just have a definition for private use? Private equestrian and commercial equestrian, just have those two.
We'd have to define, you're right, we'd have to define it. I know what my definition looks like. I don't know what anybody else's looks like.
I understand, but I, I just, I don't need it. Like, let's keep this simple, are we there?
Have to be simple.
I'm sick of matrices.
Well, here's, here's the only, the only, the only issue is that, um, right now Mild is fine where she is, she's a, she can have as many horses as she wants. She's in the R4 district, she's, has no limitation on her animal weight. Anybody in the R4 doesn't have that, that problem. The personal use.
I'm illegal and I'm, if I go to sell my, the buyer's bank is gonna say I'm a non-conforming use and they won't.
Why? Because you're, you're allowed to have that in that district?
I'm not, I'm not allowed to have my five thousand pounds.
Yes, you are. Who said you weren't?
In the R4. In the R4, you are, you're in the R4.
Are you illegal?
What's all of you want?
You're in the R4.
How do we find out what district?
You look at the zoning map. It's on the, it's on the website. It's on the town website, you look at the zoning map, okay?
Request a copy of the zoning map or have him, if he's doing emails to.
So where about this place right here for seventy acres that some nice horse person might buy, um, you know, what used to be.
Mr. Um.
Davis?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's in the R2 district.
Some nice horse person might buy that seventy acres, I would hope, it's beautiful. Um, so they couldn't have more than five thousand pounds or they would not, they would not be in R4, that's R2, right?
Right, that's R2.
But that's, that's under the, the current rules.
The current.
Yeah.
You know, if we were to, to say that you could have an equestrian center, then you'd be looking, instead of saying five thousand pounds, we'd be looking at saying thirty, thirty or fewer horses or thirty or more horses.
So what is it, that fall, fall the same thing as I said before, under animal husbandry?
Marty, Marty, we're not talking about that, we're not gonna get in there. Let's not do the mission creep on this. That's mission creep that opens up a whole different can.
We're talking about horses right now, specifically.
So maybe the committee would be good, I mean, I can go through a couple of the other things that I have.
Sounds like we need to get a committee together to go over this completely. We're getting ready or interested in redoing our barn to bring my horse home and eventually board horses. And I'll tell you one thing, looking at this stresses me out. Looking at how many different things and rules and regulations and what I can and can't do, it should be black and white. Yes or no, commercial or private, what I can, what I can't do. This just seems unrealistic. I want my children to grow up learning how to work on a farm, what responsibility is, and looking at this makes me not even wanna be involved in it.
That's why you're here.[1774.02]
Yeah, so I think that we need to make it more simple.
I think we agree about the committee, I actually wanna be part of the committee, but I can't stay any longer, I didn't know about this meeting until two days ago. Like, I can commit to putting in a little more time if I have a little bit more notice, but with two days' notice, I just couldn't pull it together.
Thank you.
But I think that all of us agree in committee, and I'm sure all of us would be more than happy to do that with you guys at some point.
I'd be awesome, thank you.
So, it's a much good, I, like, I can leave my correct phone number, because I didn't get the phone call.
Which, which?
So I'm Dream Acres.
Okay, you're right. It's not the right phone number.
No, cause I switched to a different, to, I have a cell phone now instead of the landline. So can I give you my phone number, and then, like, if you're gonna do a committee or something, you can, um, it's five nine.
Exchange it among yourselves also.
We all, we all know each other.
Yeah, but I did.
Yeah, it's fine.
We are your top.
Five nine zero, three three one one.
And you're nine eight?
Angie.
You're in G I E?
Yeah, and I'm Dream Acres on our background, so.
Thank you.
I think that would probably be the best option, and then we can all do that. All right, see you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we all have to go feed our horses very shortly, so.
And the cattle, that's, I think, I think you see the problems that we're trying to address, there, you know, we've got to handle this so that these facilities can be legal and, and expand and all of that stuff, but we have to do it in a sensible way. We don't know much about horses, cause it's probably obvious to the law, you guys do, so help us out. If you can come up with something, I mean, at least this is my opinion as one member of the board, if you can come up with something, you know, as a committee for us to look at, and then we can kind of hammer at it as far as our experiences as a planning board and what kind of issues we're likely to run into. Then we can come to some kind of, something that'll be reasonable for the town to pass a town meeting.
Can I get somebody out here to volunteer to chair that committee?
I will, I nominate Mild.
Ted, is this on media, if you could send me so I can.
It's a word, it's a word.
Yeah.
Would you do that, Moe?
With help from my compadres.
Do you have Angie's phone number?
Uh, I never, um.
Give me that, that top, and, oh.
I cut my original phone when I got rid of the hard line.
While, while we have a little lull, uh, you're all familiar, I'm speaking for the historical society of the moment, you're all familiar with Heritage Day, I hope. I don't know if you've actually been invited, but we'd love to see some equestrian people at the event, we do have draft horses already that come in from Abenaki Draft Horse Club. But if, if you wanna participate, let us know.
You went bought my horse everywhere. Maybe my pony, but, so, yeah, talk about safety. My horses are show horses, they freak out.
Well, machines, the little baby carriages.
Personality and traits.
Well, we'd love to have you participate, even if you're just there without your horses.
Where is it?
Mid, mid September, I forget, it's about mid September, usually about fifteen.
Second weekend, second weekend, September.
I don't have anything planned for the month of September.
Yeah.
Okay.
No competitions.
There were a couple things that I had comments on in here that I think the committee needs to, to consider. That the, 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 I, I, I won't tell you what letters I wrote next to the onsite parking requirements. Um, but, uh, that, it gets. You're, you're not gonna have, even if you, say you're boarding twenty horses, you, you, you're not gonna have more than five people there at one time. I don't think, I don't know, but, I'm just, that, that, that's one thing. I, I would think.
draconian is a word that occurred to me.
Well, my, my, mine was, was shorter and simpler.
No, my parking lot gets full every night I teach riding lessons. I'm, thought, uh, my parking lot was big when we first built it, and I fill it when I teach, I fill it, so.
Well, how many, but how many cars is it per, per animal, or?
But they come and go, and we don't use a full parking lot.
Yeah, no, grandparents and Joe Schmo's friend down the street wants to watch Joe Schmo's daughter ride.
And I, and I, well, I guess the other thing is, there, there are paved parking spaces with lines and all that sort of stuff.
No, that's, it, no, no, it isn't, it doesn't say it's parking specific.
No, I'm paid. Paving don't like, horses and pavement don't.
Don't get killed off. One of the Olympic horses just goes, and he's in a great paving.
I have cows, okay, I'm trying to help you.
Yes, we appreciate that. But I will say that I appreciate when we did ours, is the town said, you've gotta pave from the road back so many feet at the entrance, because you don't need all that gravel and dirt coming out of the road. And we did that, and I was probably a little annoyed at the time, cause it was another expensive encounter. But in twenty-five years, I've really appreciated that, that we did that, so.
We did too, thanks, helps save the road, that's why it does it. Basically, it's an apron, everybody has to do it. But we appreciate you doing it.
Another thing that I had comment on was, um, the, um, uh, the, the, tad, the ferment control.
Seriously?
Yeah, right.
Well, no, the ferment control was struck, I think that was struck the last time.
I thought, I thought we had taken that.
Yeah, but this is, this is, this is not the one that was needed.
If you're not smart enough to have steel containers for your feed, you serve that rat.
Actually, you don't put in steel containers anyways, but.
And poop removal every two weeks is a joke, I mean.
Yeah, that is a joke, I agree.
Okay, that, that was, actually, that, that was going to be my, my name.
Excellent.
But, but my next comment is that the preferably downwind, that, I mean, from on.
We have a level.
John wasn't here, is he?
That's silly, the, the manure pile, um, it's distance from a body of water. Ted, I'm pretty sure that a hundred feet is standard buffer from water. I, I could be wrong about that, so I'm just.
And you can't have a horse where it has to go.
Based on what, Chip, what, what, what standard?
Huh?
What standard? State standard, local standard, which standard are you talking about?
Belted galloway standard, and, you know, how far you're supposed to have your animals from, from water.
Is it a state?
A different question, where did the three hundred feet come from?
Uh, that was actually from, uh, I got that from the state.
Well, I, I think, I think that is an unnecessary burden.
Well, I always thought two fifty was probably pretty unnecessary for shoreline zoning, but I got a rule on that one too.
But manure handling, you know, has to be part of this, because that's.
I'm, I'm, I, I, I completely agree, and I, I have a neighbor whose manure pile is about twenty feet from a stream that runs by my property, so I'm, I'm not really thrilled about that. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I, I'm just saying, I think three hundred feet is excessive, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's.
If, if, yeah.
We don't have any water on our property, but three hundred feet seems excessive to me.
Well, maybe, they also.
From the red. It also depends on what's under the pile.
Let's do it in the railroad tracks.
Well, it actually depends on also grading.
Yeah.
Yeah, grading.
It's sloping away from, it shouldn't be an impact, but that's what the state had.
There's a lot of worms under the pile.
But if you have a runoff going through the middle of your property, it's mostly ditch runoff, and it dries up most all summer, fall.
Oh, that's a body of water, is it?
Well, it is.
It's an intermittent stream, that's considered an intermittent stream.
This is, but, it, it, the, the fact that it says body of water or well is a good thing.
Doesn't just go in the woods and disappear.
That doesn't include wetlands and water pools and.
Right.
Although I will add, it maybe should add, include, it, it should be possibly a smaller distance, but should include wetlands and.
Don't disagree. But remember, these were, these were standards we pulled from various locations and, we were gonna massage these.
They don't have any wetlands in Montana.
It was Montana, state of Maine. Came from the Gloucesters, some of the stuff came from the Gloucesters, some from grades.
I, I.
Do any of you do composting?
We're not allowed to store it, that was an ordinance you guys had on us, so we're not allowed to store.
Anyone on posting?
I wouldn't store for a short period.
And then we spread it.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, you know, to have it hauled off is extremely expensive, I don't know who owns yours, but, um.
It doesn't cost me a penny, I'd go out to take it, and I've been doing it for twenty-five years, because this, the town, the town told me that we're not allowed to keep it on our property. Junior can take it across the street and store it on his property, but I can't keep it on my property, I'm like, who's to say that one?
Wow, wow, well, I can talk.
All right, I know, people I know, I mean, I, I used to go to the stables and just blow up my truck with it.
Yep, people do that too, cars with garbage cans is what I get, Cadillacs with garbage can, they're shoveling it into the back of their Cadillac and they drive away with a garbage can. I'm like, just shaking my head going, I don't even wanna know. Take as much as you want.
I got Sandy Clay, it's beautiful stuff.
Thank you for the garbage.
All right, so, composting you don't do at the moment, because you don't even store for any. Well, you, oh, you do composting, okay, so you have like a, a compost pad and all of that stuff, anything special?
Well, we're, we're upgrading that to, um, put cement blocks around it, but it's got a pad and it's all drainage and all this stuff.
And so you mix with sawdust and all of that stuff.
Well, let's put it in there, they're raking out the stables, but they're, and they got enough sawdust in there anyway.
My question really was, and, and the fact that you're the only one doing it apparently, is there any real difference in terms of odor between just the manure pile and a compost pile, cause I didn't think so.
No, no, I mean, there's so many changes in the manure pile anyway, that.
And you crack it.
It's so hot in there.
And it's only for.
Even on a manure pile.
Right, so, as far as, because in here, we have different distances for compost and manure.
Or driving by two boys.
Right, it's not like that.
It doesn't take your breath away, it like, doesn't go, horse, horse manure and pile, that's not.
Horse manure is different than cow manure.
Okay, I have another question.
That's not common.
And chicken manure.
Very considerable.
I have another question, actually, I didn't wanna jump in, were you done with yours?
Well, I just, just, that, I, I, I think three hundred feet is excessive. I, I do think that it, they're, in addition to a body of water or well, that it should include wetlands.
So we have to go with that.
And I, I don't know whether that setback from wetlands should be fifty feet, or, and I understand Ted's point about creating it or whatever, but you know, none of the other rules about wetlands, but there, there, it, it's, it's all X number of feet from the boundary of the wetland, right?
Yeah.
What kind of year?
Well, it depends what kind of wetlands too, I had Frick seven years ago do my whole property for, to tell me, cause we were gonna put our house and cut off some acreage. And he came back, he did it all, and he said, you have nothing in here but nuisance wetlands, and I'd say fill it all in. He says, there's nothing precious here, so, he says, there's no veronal pools, he says, he looked all at the floor and fire and everything, and he said, and now with GPS is if you go down, my property is called the Arundel Swamp on GPS, which made me feel really good.
So it's also in the state, it's also in the state national areas.
On the side of the railroad track, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what it says.
Yeah.
But that's okay, there are different, there are different levels of it.
So, there are different kinds of wetlands that.
I, I own about a third of Arundel Swamp.
Okay.
It's on the other side of the railroad track.
Yeah.
A question I had for you in terms of, and it's not addressed in here at all, it just occurred to me as I was looking through it. You, I'm assuming, maybe I'm totally off base, but I'm assuming that on your facility, you maintain medications for horses, right? Are there already regulations in place for storing and keeping them locked up and all of that? I mean, I mean, do you have things like ketamines and so forth that you store or?
No, I'm not a vet, you have to be a vet with certain, certain things.
But if you're, if you, if you run dairy, you have all of that stuff.
Yeah, but dairy and horse regulations are totally different.
Well, that's why I'm asking, I, I guess not.
No, you, I have to be, you have to have, um, be a vet or have, be able to get stuff like that, the only thing that, um.
Right, but your vet can give it to you, it would be.
She would not, she would administer it, she would never, by law, she cannot just give it to me and say, oh, here you go, you can do this, you know.
I would know, I'm a technician, I work at an animal hospital.
To another student, you sit here, shoot yourself up with this.
Hand it out like that.
Yeah, and they don't, and they don't.
That kind of controlled substance is never on the farm itself.
Unless the veterinarian is there, no.
Right, okay.
Legally, no.
Good, well, that was a concern I had.
And I can't buy it, you know, like, you can't go online and order anything like that, you can't.
Used to be able to.
You're just not, you're just not standing on the right street corner.
That's how it's the problem.
What were you doing in college there, tell us?
Oh, no, 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 but we're, actually, in college, by some, I worked at a dairy farm, so, I don't. But, at any rate.
I was suggesting that we should use a horse.
That was a concern that I had, apparently it's not a concern, so, that's good.
Now, they've changed the standards, I mean, it depends on where you are.
Okay, and then, the fencing standards in here are like ridiculous.
Yes.
But you probably know.
Now, the, 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 hold on, now, the fence only applies along a road, the road.
Yeah, but it's totally ridiculous the way it's written, a five or three rail fence. And why rule out galvanized, and why rule out electric fence, I don't understand it.
I've been there for twenty-five years with electric fence.
Yeah.
But that, that's all part of the discussion, cause most of this came from some other place.
My horses, if they get out, they run up the driveway to their house looking for food, not, they don't, out in the road, or run around, or, you know.
That's cause horses are smarter than cows.
Or what do people think, they're gonna get hit by a train, you know, like.
Yeah, but electric fence works fine.
Oh, I just, I, I love those phone calls, you know, can you tell you're proud of it, it's got on by Ben Emery's. The whole herd, great, chasing cows at night.
Well, thank you very much for having.
I actually, I actually had a bunch of cows come across, this was only a few years ago, come across the Alfred Road.
Yeah, it was two years ago, John.
They came across all the way to Alfred Road, and across Alfred Road, way back into my field, it was quite fun.
Did you know who they were?
Yeah.
Yeah, two boys, they, they came and got them, but I'm surprised they didn't get in.
When I lived, I lived in, I lived in Alfred, the two boys used to have their cows up in Alfred, and my mom had a farm on the river road, and those cows would run all the way up to the river road and break through my mom's horse fences all the time and run around, there was always fetching, fetching cows when I was a kid.
We have a problem with deer on river road than with horses.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wild animals run through my fences more than anything.
Okay, so I think we would rest the issues that I had, Chip, did you have any more that, that you picked out?
No, just, they're, they're rings, not rinks, yes.
Yeah, good point, thank you.
Although, a horse rink could be interesting.
And, and, and again, it clearly, I, I, from, from the input I got, the, the acreage requirements are.
Yeah, and again, I think that really depends upon the operation, cause if you have indoor facilities, you may not need much acreage.
I, I, I think, to my mind, I mean.
What kind of horses you have.
Like she said, there's show horses that stand a stall, and there's horses that are outside all the time.
What, what's, what, what is the objective to, to, are we trying to protect the animals? Cause if we're trying to protect the animals, I think their owners.
They're none of them.
They care more than.
They, 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 they got plenty of money invested in, in creatures. Um, so, are, are we, are we trying to protect the neighbors? I'm kind of asking myself, I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be some minimum lot size, okay? I, um, I'm just, the, the half acre per equine, I think is possibly extreme.
Two things in my mind that could happen, as far as, as, you know, this, this acre requirement. One is that you wanna have a setback, enough of a setback from your neighbors so that they're not annoyed by the animals, and, you know, manure smells and all of that, so, whatever that is. But then the other possibility is if you have a lot of wetlands, and you have a lot of horses, it's gonna get like a feed lot, and that's not very good.
Well, what, there, there is one other thing, and I, I don't know how this is, how this would be addressed, but we actually had somebody buy a house lot at the end of the pasture, and then called the sheriff's department at two in the morning, complaining that the cows were ruined.
Well, just don't.
And, 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 my, my, my point is.
You gotta remind people that you're in a rural state, you know, like.
Next to a farm, by the way.
If you, if you bought a house lot, the cows have been there a hell of a lot longer than the house lot was. But my, 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 I guess my point is, when you're talking about setbacks, for a new operation, that's one thing. But can we, can we do something, if, 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 if Mild has, you know, her, her pasture or whatever running right up to the property line, it's been like that for as long as I can remember, then.
Do it alone.
Then, you know, I, I don't think, I think it's, it would be inappropriate for us to write this in a way that did grandfather people that have.
Well, they should be grandfathered in, I mean, we've been there twenty-five years, and it's, it's, I, you know, like I said, I own a business that is a nonconforming use in Village Residential Kenny Bunkport, but I can sell it as that, I can do with it as I have always done, because it's grandfathered.
Can you expand it?
Uh, we can go in and request expansion, hopefully, that's just a.
We have, we have limited expansion.
We have very limited expansion.
And that, and that, that, that's one of the reasons to get rid of the legally nonconformal use of it, you're not grandfathered, you're legally allowed.
But we should be legally allowed. But we should be legally allowed as we stand now. I shouldn't have to say, okay, I gotta bring my fence in fifty feet.
And that's a valid point.
Because, when I lose pasture land or open space, or difficulty mowing, and all that kind of stuff.
But that can be written into the orphans, that can be put here, that says anything existing as of.
That can, that can be part of.
Such and such a day, three minutes.
That can be part of the group's recommendation to come back and say, here's some of the areas, this is what we think it should look like.
Yeah.
Because, because like we've said, I have a clue. What I know about horses is that the last time I was on a horse, the horse flipped me for which direction we would go, and he walked.
They always do.
And they bite you too.
Oh, no, I went straight out over that bus of yours.
Well, he launched you.
But, if, if, that's one of, you know, you got, if you can work up all, some suggestions and some recommendations, then we can go from there.
Do we have wine when we have our tradition?
That is entirely up to you.
That's wherever you're having it. You can have it in a stable, or you can turn and have it in the kitchen.
I have wine in my kitchen.
But I want, I want to thank all of you for having come out, and for the feedback, this feedback is great, because it's gonna help us a lot.
If you would like, it's totally up to you, like a member of the planning board attending, I would volunteer, just let me know.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you want my number?
No, I'm trying to.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You guys just wanna put your numbers in the back of the seat. Some headaches, you gotta hold me because.
Was you a jerk?
No, 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 no. You're in the right.
I can punch you down, maybe.
Oh, sorry.
It's not on your agenda, so you can see me.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Thank you very much.
We should have been around three years ago, we were meeting every Thursday night.
Don't worry, you're gonna go back to that. The process, you're, is Speedrun doing this?
No, you're gonna have attrition on the planning board as we start that again.
But we may not have it. We may not have an option.
Now, I thought you knew better, when we did a sidewalk through our house, it was in January, February, it was one cold day.
It was ten degrees, yeah, it wasn't, it was a cold day.
Did you turn that off?
No, because you still have an agenda item.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know, I thought, I thought you were playing with that, I turned it off. Okay.
No, I'm just taking it, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
We have one more item, and that is planner.
I have nothing to report in this meeting.
Okay.
Well, except for, Marty, you had some questions, obviously.
Wait a minute, you, you said something about the, the fire chief telling you about that pet.
I'm gonna have a dinner.
Propane container of champagne.
Yeah. Right, the sidewalk.
Yep, the champagne just was handed today, a meeting with the fire chief. All right, so I'll give you some updates. Meeting with the fire chief today, I've had several meetings that went up to, it started basically when we did our walkthrough up at, for our first CO over at the cottages. We took up two guys here who are inspectors from Saco and Bidderford, believe, and, and they found some issues. One of the things that we did find was that the fire hydrant placement up there, approved by the planning board, did not meet the standards. And not, our standards did not meet NFPA standards, they were eighteen hundred feet apart instead of five hundred, yeah. And Franklin Speed was unplanned that way. So, we've talked to Rick and Joe, who have been very gracious, and they're gonna modify it, the lines are there, so it's a question of where you put in the stub and the hookup. So we're gonna be changing things around, we discovered today also, we are an NFPA town, and this is an NFPA state, as of a year ago.
National Fire Protection Act, it mandates what you, what you're doing with fire protection.
It mandates fire protection issues, and one of which is life safety one oh one.
Yeah, good one too.
Big one.
What?
Life safety one oh one. It mandates a whole bunch of fire standards for commercial developments, egress windows and residential, fire, basically, smoke detectors, CO detectors, and sprinklers. I was gonna say, did it mention sprinklers? Yes, it does, well, it has standards for sprinklers, it doesn't mandate sprinklers, the sprinkler issue is still something else.
So you wanna know something funny?
So.
These, these windows violate one oh one.
Yeah, they're all.
Way too small.
Using non-aggress windows, unbelievable.
In a fire station.
Right, but we are in NFPA town now, so it's gonna make things different.
Yep.
When did we become this?
A year ago. It was a state became, the whole state became an NFPA state, I don't know why the fire marshal didn't notify, but that's what I found out today, that's what the chief found out. This also came out, at the same time, we got a message from the fire, we got a message from the fire, basically from the fire marshal again, actually, it was from the Bureau of Licensing regarding propane tanks and so forth, their champagne had just received a permit for that tank we saw out there on that field. And it told me that that was not going to be active, but they just got a license for it, and whether it's, and the, and the location is there. So I don't know what happened, but I'm going to be asking them on Monday, what's the story, you don't have a permit for that to be there in that location. That doesn't mean they can't put it there, but they can't do it without a planning board approval, and you guys asked them about that. So, in answer to you on that one, Chip, yeah, that tank is, has been licensed, but it's, they don't have a permit from the planning board to get there, to put it there. By the way, we did, we are issuing our first CO, we didn't have a problem on Adams, we had a couple on Ranger that we wanted to hold off and.
I'm sorry, you just switched to seasonal cottages?
I did, I just switched to seasonal.
Right in the middle of.
Well, I'm giving you a quick report, if you want to ask me any questions, jump in.
I'm not asking for questions, just when you change subjects. We don't know what you're talking about, I mean, we're not, you know. Okay, so, so there is one CO already up there?
One CO already, another.
What is a CO?
Certificate of Independence.
Question before we even said that. We have never gotten back to us to tell us that the condo condition and rules were even finished, just so we could even go from there. Because the last time we knew it was the planning board, it had never been completed as yet. No, this is why I want answers and questions.
Those were done at the beginning of the month.
Well, that's news to us.
I thought I told you, well, you guys, you gave it to me to do that.
Yeah, but you tell us that it's something's been done, and if we don't know if it's done, how can?
I thought I emailed that all to you, did I not email that?
No.
I don't think so. I don't think I've seen it.
Aaron and I spent a lot of time on this, a lot of negotiating with Rick Shinnay, as you instructed me to do, and we were, had basically re-approved. Found, Aaron said it was good, the only thing that we had an issue on was, I had required a whole bunch of different things, I think I mentioned that before to this board, the issue about the storage sheds, obviously, the issue about the buffering, the issue about cutting in the buffering, and the rules regarding cutting in the buffering. And they had nothing, absolutely nothing in there regarding the storage of vehicles, I know, we talked about the storage of vehicles, taught us storage of boats, storage of canoes, ATVs, all sorts of recreational equipment, and also where they're gonna put the additional, where those, where that would be stored, if it would be stored, and what to do with additional things like RV vehicles, second vehicles, none of these things were in the rules. And basically, I gave them the parameters of what I thought they should, should do, and they, but they had to make internal decisions on how to handle those policies, because they didn't have those policies in place. It basically doubled the size of the original, the declarations, because they attacked that issue, they even got to the point where they started, they specified what dogs can be allowed, what species of dogs, what breeds can be allowed up there, but that was going a little far, but that, that's their decision, it's their association. The, they put in the fact that the planning board has to approve, or the staff has to approve, the location of those storage sheds to ensure that they do not pose a fire hazard in their location to the buildings, and I asked them, as you know, at the last meeting, and they agreed to come up with a set of standards that will be incorporated into the, into the docks, as to what constitutes the minimum criteria for citing those. And also, they put in the declarations, as I said, regarding their hiking trails, where the planning board or staff does approve those, that was in there. So there was a lot of work, we did a lot of work in getting these docks up to, to the level that you were expecting. And I think we got a really good set of condominium docks, very thorough, and protects the town's interest and, and protects the owner's interest, and the, both the owners, both the current owners and the condo association that will be coming out of this. So, it looks pretty good, I've arranged with Joe to also, in regards to the recreational facilities, to have a meeting with Eastern Trail Management District, because he wants to have direct access to the trail, and only the association, only the, the management district can give, grant that, that privilege with, with Unitel's approval, and they want to do that, they want to become a major center, and they're looking at also extending that trail down to Route One. But, all of this stuff is in the condo docks, they're completed, they could not receive the CO until they did complete those condo docks, so it's been a mad rush for the last couple of weeks. But we have our first CO.
Okay, on that, do we have also the idea about the access with the gate, has that all been? Because that was all supposed to have been done so that, along the way.
Are you talking about the?
Fire, fire lane coming in and out of.
Yeah, they can't proceed, it, it's, it's on the, it's on the plan, and it's on, the fund is a fact, that they can not pursue past stage, you know, Level Three or, or Phase Three, until that's completed, and I was in a meeting, what, last week with Hanus of Grandin, and we were talking about, you need to get going on that, Hanus wants to get going on that because he's running out of work, and they need.
Who's Hanus?
He's the, he's the Grandin super on the job, he's the guy who's doing all of the site work. He's the guy I meet with once a month, with my engineer, with their engineer, with Grandin, and Hanus represents Grandin, he's the super on the job, and we go over all the drawdowns, so, every month, I do the drawdowns, and we review the inspections, review the financing. I have an account that they have to keep pouring money into, and we draw off that account, and that account cannot be drawn off without my signature and my engineer's signature. We do that once a month.
So I want to go back to that, I thought they couldn't start Phase Three until that road was completed.
You guys told me they couldn't.
Right.
Yeah. They could start Phase Three. Yeah.
No, I thought, I thought that, I thought Phase Three had to be, Phase Two had to be finished before they could, and the road had to be in before they started Phase Three.
Before they.
So three in the plans.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
You had that discussion before, because there was disparity between the findings of fact and the plans, and, and the findings of fact showed two, Phase Two, they couldn't go beyond Phase Two without putting in, and you said, no, no, it was Phase Three. And you're right, it said, said Phase Three on the, on the assigned plan, but Phase Two, on the findings of fact, and you said Phase Three was the one that you were talking about. So they could, they could not go beyond Phase Three without completing that.
Okay, if they're also getting ready to tie around, joining with the Eastern Trail, his engineer better turn out and plan on how to have that fire access too at the same time, because you got, you, Unitel there about crossing it over.
Our biggest concern with that right now is purchase of that land, because that land has not been purchased, they purchased the easement, but they haven't purchased the land, which is driving us crazy, and costs us some money, to be honest with you.
They have an option on it, though, don't they?
They have an option on it, but once you, and once you file the plan that says I own this land, you should own the land.
They should own the land.
You should own the land that you claim that you, that you have a subdivision or.
I'm sorry, that issue's still open?
It's still open.
Well, I. When, when are they gonna close it?
March, they said.
March of next year?
Yep.
Do we have, as the planning board, do we have, that, I, I don't understand how they're moving forward with a project that include, and, and they got the TIF and everything else, and they don't even own some of the land that's in the, supposed to be in the TIF.
Well, they own the right title and interest, which is all that we require, but it should be owned, it doesn't, we don't care who the owner, from a TIF standpoint, we don't care who owns the land, because the TIF covers, it covers the land, and what occurs on the land doesn't.
Well, if they don't own the land, you can't do anything with the land, just because you might have right title and interest, it doesn't mean that you can do something with it.
That's true, but guys, I mean, there is no requirement that they have to own the land, I keep insisting on it, I keep pushing on it, Beth. Beth keeps pushing on it, but right now, you know, we, we, what do you want to do, say, well, we can't do the project without owning this land, that we're gonna shut down the project? What do you want us to do on that? They have not exercised the option, they cannot proceed past a certain point without, you know, without basically building that road, so.
Very soon.
Do you have them, do you have them by, do you have them in a corner on something, yes, they, they cannot proceed without.
Yeah, they don't put the other four units in.
Well, you can do that, you can make that, if you want to make that a stipulation of approval, there's a leverage for it, if you want to use that as leverage, I like that leverage, that's fine.
But let's, let's keep in mind, though, why that, why we set Phase Three, and why we have that access road, it was for fire safety and. We've said that.
For buildup, I realize that.
That the distance from Route One was not sufficient to warrant it until you got past Phase Three, and then, it was a safety issue to be able to come in from the other end, both in terms of numbers and in terms of distance.
And I agree with John.
Well, there's two points on that, also, remember, this is a much faster, in terms of response time, mountain road through, in Meadows is about five minutes faster. I mean, it cuts the response time in half.
Be more than that, you say you'd be going down and around and back up.
Exactly. You're going with an engine full of water, and you're going up that grade, that slows you down even more. Second thing is, you know, technically, we should have had a second means of egress on Route One, because that's what the ordinance says, but, but, you know, the planning board accepted an emergency access through, through a mountain, and that, that was your program to do that. But it's triggered, just like it is with Hissong, it's triggered by the number of units, or in this case, phases, with Hissong, it was the number of units. With this one, it was by the number, by the phases, and, and they haven't hit that trigger yet.
Right.
It's something I keep reminding them of, and Hanus is reminding them of, and Grandin is reminding them, because it's not a small job, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is that they get through to Phase Three, and they finish Phase Three, and they go, guess what, guys, we're not gonna do it.
They can't, financially, they can't, there's too many of them, something to leave on the table.
Well, you know, what if, what if the real estate, I was thinking about this the other day, what if, you know, right now, they're selling units for three hundred thousand.
Plus.
Three hundred thousand plus, because the real estate market is hot.
Yeah.
I'd like to get, I like Marty's idea, I would like to force their, force them to purchase that property now and not wait until March of next year, when the, you know.
Things might go hell.
Fed raises rates, and somebody gets elected and ruins the economy, and, you know, whatever, president and whatever, I'm not.
That would not be political.
No, no, I, I, but, but I mean, but my, my point is, there's a lot, a lot of things could happen between now and March that could make a real estate developer.
Yeah.
Say, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let that option expire, and, and I'm, especially if this board waived a requirement for two access points on Route One, I, I, I've got a real problem with them not owning all the property.
Question also, too, at the same time, what about the prop, the other property coming possibly, was it something off Camp Brown Road?
Off Camp Brown.
Has that ever been completed?
Can't, they can't do that, the right of way is not wide enough, I don't know why they bought it, it's a twenty-five foot.
But is it bought?
Oh, yeah, they purchased that, twenty-five foot right of way. Can't even build a road on the twenty-five foot right of way. That's the road that they need, but yes, they own that, that's one of their superfluous lots, they do own that, but they don't own the, the other one. That's still their option, and we, it's basically called the Dooson property.
Yeah.
And the issue with the Dooson property right now is both that, basically, the Dooson property and one of their properties, they did not file their tree growth renewal permit on. And if they take it out of tree growth, they're staring down the barrel of fourteen thousand dollars worth of fines. And Dooson's staring down the barrel of some fines, because he didn't do it either. And Dooson's staring down the barrel of some fines, because he didn't do it either. And they didn't convert it into, they're, they're looking to convert it into open space, which they can do. Into the open space program. There's three levels of the open space program you can go into, and they're gonna go with, obviously, the one where you just permanently keep it in, out of development. And that does qualify, and Beth, Beth and, and Rick and Joe have been, and Rick Shene have been tumbling over this for the last month. So there's a lot of factors in the play here, and if you wanna just hold, hold, and basically said this is the condition for doing this, is that you execute that, that contract. To make us feel better that you're gonna follow through, you're certainly in that position to do that. I don't know why they're waiting till, till, till March. I'm not privy to those financial decisions.
Because if they, they'll have to shell out the money, then they, you know.
I would recommend that, that when you communicate with them next, that you mention that the planning board is thinking of this.
Oh, I will.
And that it will likely be on the agenda soon unless, you know, something happens.
Yeah, I will. Um, I'll probably do it when Rick submits again. I'm just gonna give him a little breather this week because they've had a rough week. But, um, it's, it's going well there. Other things, I mean, I, I really hadn't prepared a report. We have a, an app, next week we have an application, which I haven't finished going over. It's basically for boat storage facility, I think I mentioned that. I can go upstairs if you guys wait here a minute and I'll give you your packets, so I don't have to deliver them. But I won't, will not include my review, but I'll give you the, give you the material. I haven't gotten the stuff from, um, we have a public hearing for our friends at, um, Atlantic Mini Storage, but I haven't gotten any new submission. They couldn't, they couldn't do it in time anyways. But we have that part of their public hearing, and they had, and then we have this application, and then champagne's to discuss, you know, to make a decision on, on the sidewalk, and that's all we got for next week.
Okay.
What are they doing with Fox just property on Route 1 in River Road? Cause I know they're in there clearing.
No idea. They're clearing?
Yeah, they're clearing, they've been doing that for a while.
Couple days there, it's all brushed and everything else is there.
Nobody has permits in it.
Huh?
Nobody has permits.
Well, hey, we're, we're telling you, so you can.
Tell the code enforcement officer?
Well, that's, that's also.
That's a whole other issue.
The, uh, road for, what's it called again? Cliff View?
Ledge View, that's not there.
No.
Why?
This is something with.
No, no, that's a different place, that's another road, but that's, that's all been cleared.
Southeast of Route 1.
Yeah, I know, we already went through that. The day that, that we went out there and said, what, what are you guys doing? Cause the day we finally got the forester sent us the, the permit that they had issued for them to do that cutting, and it's under 40%, so they don't need a permit. But they're doing it on the, they're doing it on the Ireland property, the Fitzpatrick property there. Where they, they intend to put in that, that project, you know, the industrial part, the steel building industrial part. And yeah, they're essentially clearcutting the area where they wanna put the road and where, where Labby wants to shift his road over so they have a joint road. They can, they can clearcut as long as it's not more than 40% of the total basal area of the, of the, of the tree stand. So that's what they're doing.
Right, but they don't have a permit for a road here, do they?
They don't have a permit for a road, and, no.
Okay, I'm just wondering, cause I, I see all the clearing and I see.
Oh, I did too. I got whole, I got several calls on that.
Sort of a landing area has been built.
Yeah, the staging area.
Do you think it, think it looks like a road?
But sure does.
It is a road. It's no question it looks like a road. It's an access road in through some heavy ground.
I have a question on the DuBois consent agreement.
Yeah.
Did everybody take a look at it?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I, I want, do you know any of the history, like who, who actually wrote it?
Yeah.
The judge?
No.
No, I would hope not.
No, I think Leah wrote it.
Leah? I mean, this has got more holes in it than a bucket full of doughnuts.
Leah wrote it, basically in the, what, sorry, I was not, I did not attend.
Right. But it was written by?
The attendees were Tom Danilich, Leah.
He gave away the store, John.
And the CEO, and Jim Nagle. Those were the attendees.
And everything in it.
They were put in a room with judging, with, with the judge, Judge Crowley. And, uh, and the DuBois folks were put in another room. Judge Crowley basically shuttled back and forth to negotiate, um, to basically negotiate a, uh.
Well, it's, it's, it's basically a piece of garbage. So what can we do with, can, can the board address any of those holes?
Nope.
There's no specificity there.
Oh, it's, it's worse than that. Cause I, I had a conversation with the town attorney, where next year in July, we have to give them a permit based on that.
That, I asked that question the night we had the meeting with the Board of Selectment. Why are we waiting till next July? In next July, they're gonna have permission to do what they want.
Yeah, we have to give them the permit.
And they still.
That's another thing. No, we don't have to.
According to that agreement.
According to that agreement, we do, John.
No, it doesn't say we have to issue a permit. It says that they have to, to, uh, apply for one.
Yeah.
So it doesn't mean that it's automatically granted. They have to still meet standards.
They have to meet standards, but volume is not gonna be the issue.
Volume's not the issue.
That's basically.
Well, I mean, there are so many, as I looked through it, there's so many places where there's, it's so vague that there's, there's, if, if Leah wrote it, I hope we didn't pay her for it, because this is pretty bad. I'm, I'm not an attorney, I could have done better.
I think we wanna be careful to have this discussion anymore, because if we're gonna be hearing an application.
I'm not hearing it, I'm gonna better, so I can see.
Well, I think the rest of the board really shouldn't be discussing this, because it will be a pending application.
That's, that's fine, but I'm not gonna be hearing it anyway, and that's my opinion. I think this is a pretty bad, uh, whatever you call it, decree.
It's a consent agreement. It's an agreement which both parties agreed to. And that's, that's the middle ground between both parties.
Well, I can see why one party would agree to it. But why the town would agree to it doesn't make sense to me, but.
I didn't see the middle ground.
Can, as, as a private individual on a butter, is there anything I can do to address some of this?
I don't know how to answer that. Legally, is there anything you can do? No, that's the law of the land, it's signed by the judge. It's a court order.
Well, it may be the law of the land, but it's only like half the law. I mean, there's, there's nothing here.
It's a court order.
Yeah.
If they violate it.
But I'm, I'm talking in terms of.
If we violate it, we go back to.
I'm talking in terms of providing specificity. Is there a way that I can go to someone and say, what do you mean exactly here? What does, what, what standards are you talking about? And, and what's the timeframe and all of that stuff that's been left out?
The horse is in the next state.
Excuse me?
The horse is out of the barn, in the next state, the barn has burned down, and the ashes have been sold.
Well, that may be so.
I think it's been converted to a landmark.
But I'm, I'm just wondering if, i- is there anything that can be done? Or do we just have to wait for the next, I'm not saying we, I'm talking, as a town, does a town have to wait for the next court go around?
The board, uh, the next session, the, the planning board will be doing is reviewing their application next year.
Hearing the application, right, but as a town, I guess I have to talk to the town manager.
I think so.
Yeah.
Because the planning board, I can only speak for the planning board, cause I don't know what the town's gonna do.
I don't mind an agreement. I'm not rejecting to that, but the agreement has to say something.
Okay, so on, on a completely different note, cause we can't, as a planning board, we can't discuss that particular issue. So on a completely different note, we, we sent a letter to the town manager requesting that he run interference, for lack of a better term, with J group.
Yeah, I got through the end of the month.
And they have until the end of the month, which is not that far away. They've got 10 days. Have, have they done anything to the, with the town manager? Have they given them any money? Do you know what the status of that is?
Status is unchanged.
Unchanged, okay, so nothing has happened. Okay.
Anyway, the next question is, if it doesn't happen on the 30th, what happens?
I mean, it's indicated, I believe I gave you, did I not give you the handout on that? I think I sent it to you, did?
You did.
Yeah, okay.
You did.
Uh, the next stage would be turns it over to the town, town attorney.
So yeah, basically what Roger said.
They'll get an extension.
The same town attorney that wrote that.
Yeah, the same town attorney that wrote that.
Well, but that, I'm surprised, I mean, I don't mean to criticize Leah, but she's very smart and she's a very good attorney. But this, this is terrible, but.
But understand, the judge, that is, that is, I don't think Leah really wrote that as much as, it was crafted by Judge Crowley.
He shouldn't be a judge then. That's horrible, because a judge is supposed to be better than a lawyer.
I believe he's retired.
So I will talk to Judge Crowley then, if I have to. However, getting back to the J group, doesn't, doesn't our code enforcement officer have to issue a violation first?
Yeah.
And that, cause he hasn't even issued a violation, I don't believe.
No.
No. Because the town manager took, took that out of his hands. Right.
I, I don't know that sequence of events.
Well, I do.
Marty, is that a movement to adjourn?
No, I still have questions.
Yeah, the town manager just said it was a sticky issue.
Yeah, and he took, he took it on himself as opposed to letting the code officer do his job.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't wanna go up against the former chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, it's his job that's on the line, of course. I mean, this is crazy stuff, you know? But, you know, we gotta get a handle on this kinda stuff, and we've gotta set up some regulations where this can't happen. You know, because you, what do you think the talk around town is? Holy smokes.
We're seeing it now.
It, it's pretty bad. I mean, everyone is saying, well, why, why do we follow any rules? Because nobody else has to.
I know somebody moved into the town about six months ago, and I asked them why they moved to Rundle. Says, cause I heard you can do anything you want.
Yeah, pretty much, right. And if that's, if that's what we wanna do, then let's do it.
Then get rid of all the regulations.
I worked so hard to comply with it.
Well, because only honest people get drafted here.
It's like, only honest people have guns, only honest people don't go to micro checks.
I went over backwards to follow the standard. Rules and regulations. It, it was really hard.
Now, if you had, Chip, if you had done it the right way, you'd have gotten elected to the Board of Selectmen and then thumbed your nose at the ordinance.
Question.
But we need to do something about enforcement.
I don't care.
Uh, as planning board members, when we take sidewalks, are we paid for it, or is that a freebie?
Uh, that's considered part of the, um.
It's a freebie.
It's, it's part of your, um, stipend that you receive for that evening's meeting. Yeah, it's, you don't get paid for that.
So if we don't get paid, if we don't go to the sidewalk and we go to the meeting.
You still get paid the same.
Right.
Yeah.
I didn't even realize there's, there's money involved.
Oh. Chip, I don't want to disillusion you, there's no money involved.
You know what it pays for?
Spare change.
It pays for the printing of your printer.
Not even that.
20 bucks. You get 20 bucks a meeting.
Uh, I understood, why I'm asking that is because sidewalk is one event and turn around, meeting is another. And turn around, there was supposed to be paid for each one, not a group effort.
I, I have been instructed by, I was instructed by the town manager at the time when this issue came up. And he told me, no, you don't get paid for sidewalks.
Okay, then I think we should turn it on and send something to the Selectmen and say, the amount of hours that we spend, and we don't get the big bucks like they do, we deserve at least to consider our time a little bit more valuable.
Yeah, they have half hour meetings and get what, 75 bucks?
I don't know.
Uh, I'd like to make that a motion, please. I'd like to make that a motion.
Go ahead, Marty, what's your motion?
What I just said.
I will say it again for me, cause I wasn't writing it down.
The motion is that since we have sidewalks and we have planning board meetings, we should be paid for each one.
Per meeting.
Because the fact is, they may not always occur on the same day.
That's right.
Yeah, on Saturdays, when we did sidewalks on Saturday, I agree with you, that was the next.
You want a time and a half of that?
No, it should be, it should be treated as a meeting.
Because it is, we have to take minutes and everything else.
I have a motion that, Marty has made a motion that the planning board members should be paid for sidewalks as if they were meetings.
And be sent to the Selectmen and have it addressed.
Yes.
I, I think instead of saying being paid, it should receive a gratuity, which is more.
Compensated.
Don't say gratuity, because you'll receive, you'll receive about like 15% of your, of 20, of 20 dollars, you know?
We should be.
You get like 250.
Okay, so we're gonna need a second for that.
A second in providing we distinguish between a sidewalk on a meeting night and a sidewalk on a Saturday.
I think it should be a sidewalk.
Sidewalk in general.
In general, I think we, because it's a meeting, we get paid for the meeting, and we get paid for the other meeting.
You gotta drive someplace else.
Okay, alright.
Starts at.
Does that mean it'll start?
Excuse me?
I'm asking, Roger, do you still hold with your second without condition?
No, I'll, I'll.
So I don't have a second on this?
Oh yeah, I'll second it.
I do have a second on this.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded, that we submit to the Board of Selectmen.
A request.
A request that we be compensated for both sidewalks and our regular planning board meetings. Put in all the other.
May I ask, may I ask a practical question? Why? I, I, I don't disagree with it, but if it, if it's actually 20 dollars per meeting, what's the point? Is, is it just to make a point?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's fine.
I bet I.
Marty, I, I, I will vote yes on your motion. I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify what, what the purpose was.
Basically, this board is taking.
We're not here to make money.
That's true. Cause for, otherwise, we wouldn't. Okay, so any other discussion on Marty's motion? Hearing on all those in favor? It is unanimous.
Okay.
Like to make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Gentlemen, remember next week, there is a, uh, 8:51, there is a sidewalk next week.
Are we gonna get paid for it?